Fourth Valentine's Day for all you gentlemen in the audience, don't forget today. 2017, we'll call the meeting to order. Let the record show that Commissioner Stillwell is, has been out sick with his neck and he will be returning shortly at the end of the week, but he is not present today. If you would, please rise for our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we are here in, in this room this morning because you have ordained, you have called into place and purpose government. And so, Father, there are men, there are commissioners and leaders here who have answered the call, they have accepted the call to position themselves so that they could lead this county. Voters have gone to the polls and we have exercised our right to select leaders. And so, Father, we as each and every one in this room and in this county, we commit to you, first of all, to thank you for our government. Secondly, Father, to commit to you and to them that we want to do everything in our power as you lead us to make our homes, our community, our county, a better place. So, Father, for these men that have answered the call and sit on this dais, guide them. You have said, Father, that if we will ask for wisdom, you will grant it and grant it liberally. So, Father, may each one in this room, regardless of which side of the podium they sit, ask you for wisdom, receive it from you and use it to honor you and to make our county a better place. Father, we pray for Commissioner Stillwell, who is home recuperating. Pray, Father, that he will be back to his place as soon as possible. And, Father, we continue to pray for our county, our state, our nation. Give us, Father, the leaders we need with a commitment to lead. And, Father, we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Dan, thank you very much, sir. All right, gentlemen, approval of the minutes for January 24th. The chair will open up for a motion.
So moved.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approval of minutes passed. If we could now, we're going to do a proclamation in honor of Pastor Ray Johnson. So, if his family would come up and meet me at the podium, please. For those of you who don't know, Pastor Ray Johnson went home to be with the Lord last week and he was just a wonderful man. And we wanted to take an opportunity, all of us found ourself out of town that day and could not be there. And we wanted to take a moment just to read a proclamation in honor of him and the work that he's done. Whereas Pastor Ray Johnson was born on Friday, February 24th, 1956, to parents Heyman and Ruby Johnson. And whereas Pastor Ray Johnson married his love Pamela Sweat Johnson, forty years ago, March 4th, 1977, and was blessed with two beautiful children, Misty and Ray Jr. And whereas prior to surrendering to God's call in his life, Pastor Ray Johnson served as a park ranger at Little Tablet Island, Jacksonville, manager of Bailey's Auto Parts, that's where I met him first, and also worked at Palaca Ford in the parts department. And whereas answering God's call in his life, Pastor Ray Johnson was ordained as a minister in 1993 and graduated bachelor's degree from Liberty Bible Institute in 1994. Whereas Pastor Ray Johnson was called to Pastor Lake Hill Baptist Church, Keystone Heights, in 1996, eventually being called to Pastor Southside Baptist Church, Palaca, where he faithfully served the last sixteen years as pastor until God called him home. And whereas Pastor Ray had an uncanny knowledge of the Word of God, as well as a prepetous way of dissecting, dissecting and delivering the Word of God with grace and a God-given passion to help people understand God's Word and the importance of salvation. And whereas a congregation of Southside Baptist Church and many who knew Pastor Ray considered him to be Paul of our time for years, continued to serve, preach and witness while his health was steady, steadily and rapidly declining. And whereas in spite of this thorn in his side, Pastor Ray continued with a humble heart, a love and excitement for Jesus and a strong desire to see people come to know and have a personal relationship with Jesus Christ. And whereas Pastor Ray often talked of the love, appreciation and lessons learned from mentors who had inspired him early in his days of ministry. And whereas because of their influence, Pastor Ray recognized the significance, importance, the significant importance of doing the same for those who surrendered to the call of God on their lives to go into ministry. Whereas Pastor Ray, foresight and holding events to bring awareness to the devastating effect drug and alcohol addictions are having on families, but especially in Putnam County, eventually led to the creation of the nonprofit U-Turn Community Outreach Alliance and numerous changes changed lives that now serve God. Whereas Pastor Ray has been instrumental tool, used by God to change the impact of lives of so many people, creating many more tools for God to use in his honor and glory. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners on the fourteenth day of February 2017, that Raymond Johnson Sr. be hereby honored, recognized for the numerous accomplishments he made during his ministry and the countless lives that were changed because of his love for God and for them. Done, ordered and proclaimed this fourteenth day of February 2017. Mr. Commissioners, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
So moved by Commissioner Goddard. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pickens, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for the lives he's changed.
Mr. Chairman, there's quite a few members of his congregation here today. They would, came for his honor. If you guys would be recognized, it would be great. Shannon?
Come on in.
Casey, I saw a bunch of you out there. Thank you all for coming today.
Everybody from Southside, come on up.
Yeah, you want to get, come on. We'll get a picture taken with all the commissioners.
Commissioners, if you want to join us.
Sure.
Wow.
Over here.
Mr. Administrator, would you like to join us?
Are you sure?
Oh, my.
Don't have a wide angle lens on.
All right. Everyone smile.
One more.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lible, for that.
A lot of folks.
Yeah.
Testament to his, that he was a very wonderful man.
All right. Next on our agenda, as soon as everybody gets, Linda Myers, tax collector, our honorable tax collector, is in the house today.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Honorable Clerk, staff and the wonderful citizens with us today for these events that just occurred, that I'm really pleased to be here for the Reverend Johnson. I am here, though, to recognize an employee of the, that is currently with the Tax Collector's Office, although we're celebrating five years of her service to Putnam County. And I'm going to guess, but I didn't ask this question, I meant to, were you born in Putnam County? I thought you were homegrown, but just for the record, you know, her entire life being here in Putnam County and, and for five years serving, so could I recognize and ask Tammy Crabtree to join me and also Patsy Treadwell? I'm going to now turn this over to Patsy Treadwell, but not before saying that Patsy has been working for the Tax Collector's Office for how long?
Twenty-eight years, the first of March.
Twenty-eight years, also homegrown, I think. Also homegrown. So, all this to point out that we have great opportunity here in our community and that also we have two people who've spent their lifetime with Putnam County still serving our citizens. That's a big deal.
That is.
But so with that, Patsy Treadwell, who is Tammy's supervisor and also is the manager of Motor Services Division, please step up.
Good morning, everybody. How are y'all doing? I just wanted to say a few things about Tammy. I think because on February the first, 2012, she began her career with the tax, what's, I'm sorry, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, sorry, working as a warrants clerk. August 29, 2016, she began her career with us here as a customer service representative and we're very happy to have her. Let's see, her career change from the sheriff's office to the tax collector's office was considered continual service as there was no break in service from one office to the other. Prior to coming to work for Putnam County, Tammy worked with her husband in a family business, many of you may have known, which is Crabtree Commercial Tire. Tammy brings a wealth of business knowledge and customer service to the table. Tammy currently presents, I'm sorry, processes vehicle titles and registrations, tax payments, concealed weapon permits, and also works in our call center. Please join us as we congratulate Tammy for five years of dedicated service to Putnam County.
For the record, Patsy, Tammy is from the metropolis of Bosswick, Florida.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And so, as you know, I always try to let you guys know what tag we are demonstrating this month. January through March, like many of you, we're working hard for March of Dimes, which is one healthy family, one baby at a time, is the mission. So, January through March, we are highlighting specialty tags that promote healthy families, whether they're involved with the, we have a tag with DOJJ, Juvenile Justice, we have Family First, we have Violence Against Children Prevention, we have, there's probably ten or twelve that deal with the healthy family, the healthy child. We couldn't have enough because that's such a great mission that we all support. So, if you're in the office, you'll see them on the wall and if that sounds like something you'd like to promote, it doesn't cost a lot of extra money to do something very special. Thank you for allowing us to be here, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And happy Valentine's Day.
Yes. Thank you to you. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is proclamation. Commissioner Goddard, you have the floor. Ms. McCoy, are you in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning. I don't know if anybody knows Ms. Sheila, but Sheila does a lot of work for the Christian Service Center. This is Palaca Christian Service Center Month. Whereas the Palaca Christian Service Center's beginning was with the Palaca Ministerial Association in January 1992 and whereas the Palaca Christian Service Center has been a beacon of hope and help for the entire community, offering assistance to those in need. And whereas the Palaca Christian Service Center's long-term goal is to work with clients on an individual basis to find permanent workable solutions to improve their current circumstances, thereby improving the community as a whole. And whereas the Palaca Christian Service Center provides basic needs, clothing, shelter, household goods, financial needs, utilities, rent and mortgage, medical needs, health exams, prescriptions, employment needs, job searches, referrals, training, resume writing, which is a very important aspect, financial education, money management, budget, financial planning and referral, the R.L. Simmons House for Emergency Shelter for Homeless, elder care, completing paperwork, medications, domestic violence assistance, counseling, emergency shelter referral and spiritual needs, counseling, prayer, tracts. And whereas the Palaca Christian Service Center has been blessed to serve our community for twenty-five years, giving a hand up to the people of Putnam County. Now therefore, the Putnam County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims February 2017 as Palaca Christian Service Center Month in Putnam County and urges all citizens to recognize and acknowledge the Palaca Christian Service Center's important role in Putnam County. And this is done and ordered and adopted this fourteenth day of February 2017.
Congratulations.
And I'd like to make a motion for this to be entered.
Yes, right ahead.
Second.
All right. Dan, all in favor?
All in favor, please say aye.
All right. Good. If you'll lead us down here. Mr. Leary, I'd like to join. Honorable.
Big smile.
Thank you. Congratulations. Appreciate it. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, I think our agenda got hijacked for just a little moment. I think Tim Smith has to meet at the podium with Faye Sparkman, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll take a little levity, if you don't mind, and enjoy ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, almost two years ago, I was inducted as the first member of the Huggers Club of Putnam County. This was really Faye and Sparky's idea and there really is a point to that, so I want to read a little statement here. It says, "Huggers Club of Putnam County, dedicated to good humor and friendship, this informal association recognizes that all people deserve respect, whether a county official, county employee or citizen, and we believe in civility. Whether we agree on certain issues or not, we strive to maintain common courtesy. Based on the golden rule, we convey friendship and camaraderie with a hug or a handshake for each of us is a valued member of this diverse community known as Putnam County." And as you know, on your agenda, every time that it's published, it has a statement about civility. And so, this really is a community recognition of that also. So, we want to induct some new members today. So, when we call your name, if you'll come up and join us, Faye will present you with a little certificate and a pin you can wear. So, first is Sheriff Gator DeLoach.
All right.
I told you we were going to get you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
He wants to get your picture.
So, what we want to do is, but we want you to stand over here when you get through, so then we'll get a group picture. Next is Commissioner Buddy Goddard. And next is Stacy Manning.
Attorney gets a hug?
I think he was surprised. Did he get the hug?
Yes, he did.
It's a loving bunch, aren't we?
Charles Overturfs.
All right, Ms. Overturfs.
Next is Commissioner Bill Pickens. These are actually alphabetical, so nobody's in front of the other. And now Colonel Joe Wells. I told you.
They love their pastor.
Thank you, thank you.
I know. I know. Such a nice man.
All right. And what we'd like to do also is to call up Mr. Chairman as a former inductee and Quinn Romey, if you come up and then we'll get one big picture. Okay? And I think we have a couple more that we'll get at another meeting. Right? Yeah, okay.
There was two that couldn't be here today.
Right, okay. Great. All right, so, let's see here. Let's get, let's get the real tall ones in front. That'd be me.
All right. Time to get to business now. Thank you very much. We want to recognize our elected officials in the audience, the Honorable Linda Myers, you've seen her here earlier, and Supervisor Election, Charles Overturfs in the back, back here, and in Larkin Town Councilman, John LaHurt. Did I miss anybody else that?
Among the Park Councilmen?
Who?
Mr. Vic is a councilman in Palaca.
I don't, I mean, Pomona Park. Okay, there you are. I couldn't, okay, I. Mr. Vic, thank you for being here and we appreciate that very much. I hope you do it better than I do it down, down at Pomona Park, but thank you for your patience and we appreciate it. We're going to go into our public comment section of our agenda now and I have a bunch of blue cards. The blue cards are on the back wall on each side. You don't have to have a blue card to fill it out, to speak. There will be a time for you to do that when that time comes. I will say, if it's an agenda item, if you'd please hold your comments for that agenda item when we get there. I have not had a chance to review them yet, but we'll start taking them in the order that I got them. Mr. Tim Hotellin wants to talk about waterways and trails. Is that correct?
They're on.
That's, okay, we'll move that. Mr. Hotellin, you want to talk about the audit? Please come up, please, sir.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to being frisked out of the box.
That's okay.
Tim Hotellin, San Mateo. As we all know, the financial audit has come down from the state and I would just like to encourage all of you as part of the response and preparing for the response to keep in mind findings nine and ten that encourages citizen participation and hopefully a lot of aggravation will dissipate in the process as we have full knowledge and, and life will be good, I hope.
Thank you, Mr. Hotellin, we appreciate that. Roxanne Weeks, oh, never mind, you have an agenda item. Sorry to read the card. Jeff Rawls, please come and state your name and address.
Jeff Rawls, 1100 Carr Street, Palaca. I just, I wanted to agree with what Mr. Leary said in the paper about the likeliness of a series of meetings. I think that there should be some meetings regarding this audit. And, you know, if you guys are requesting Monday, I'd, I'd like to be here for that if possible, but I'd just like to agree with him.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls, we appreciate that. Mr. Robert Bly, BACC Direction.
Good morning, gentlemen. Robert Bly, 116 Sand Lake Drive, Pomona Park, Florida. I did notice on the agenda that we didn't have anything on there about the audit findings, so I'll go ahead and get into that. There are ten findings that have come out in the preliminary audit findings. They need to be discussed and we need to have meetings on this with the public's input. I'm worried that the public may be misled or left out. I'm worried that that's going to happen with this audit, with the findings and with discussion that may not agree with some of the things that the board members feel or staff. What I saw in these ten findings is a pattern, a pattern that should never happen. It shouldn't happen because there are five people up here that should be in charge of the people that these findings point at. One person in particular, in concert with another, caused at least five of these findings, but without, without direction from the BACC. Now, that could be because the BACC didn't want to step on any toes or they didn't want to take on the responsibility, I don't know. But the point is, the root cause is sitting in this room and that root cause needs to go away. And I've said it for over a year now. I don't think there's any secret that those who know me know what I'm talking about. I'm not going to name names, but I, I do think that this should be taken care of quickly and I think that the state would appreciate that because there are a lot of findings and they all point at the same person and they also point at the board. Now, most of the board is gone that was here when all this stuff was going on. Most of them are gone. That doesn't mean that, you know, we, we can't go back down that same road. We can easily because it was so easy to do before. We have to get out of that mentality where the commissioners are secondary to certain staff. Commissioners are in charge, they're the legislators, they're the ones that make the rules and they also need to follow them. So, my point is, we need to have, we need to have a lot of discussion about this, what's really going on with Putnam County, what's going on with our finances, with our contracting. All these things point to problems dealing directly with staff members in relation to BACC. Who's in charge? You're in charge, you need to take control and that's what I'm hoping to see from all those new commissioners and, by the way, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bly, for your comments and we appreciate that. Kathy Kelly, Ms. Kelly, if you'll come forward.
I have a letter I'd like to... to happen with this audit, with the findings, and with discussion that may not agree with some of the things that the board members feel, or staff. What I saw in these 10 findings is a pattern, a pattern that should never happen. It shouldn't happen because there are five people up here that should be in charge of the people that these findings point at. One person in particular, in concert with another, caused at least five of these findings, but without, without direction from the B.O.C.C. Now, that could be because the B.O.C.C. didn't want to step on any toes, or they didn't want to take on the responsibility. I don't know. But the point is, the root cause is sitting in this room, and that root cause needs to go away. And I've said it for over a year now. I don't think there's any secret that those who know me know what I'm talking about. I'm not going to name names. But I do think that this should be taken care of quickly, and I think that the state would appreciate that, because there are a lot of findings, and they all point at the same person, and they also point at the board. Now, most of the board is gone that was here when all this stuff was going on. Most of them are gone. That doesn't mean that, you know, we can't go back down that same road. We can, easily, because it was so easy to do before. We have to get out of that mentality where the commissioners are secondary to certain staff. Commissioners are in charge. They're the legislators. They're the ones that make the rules, and they also need to follow them. So, my point is, we need to have, we need to have a lot of discussion about this, what's really going on with Putnam County, what's going on with our finances, with our contracting. All these things point to problems dealing directly with staff members in relation to B.O.C.C. Who's in charge? You're in charge. You need to take control, and that's what I'm hoping to see from all those new commissioners, and, by the way, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bly, for your comments, and we appreciate that. Kathy Kelly. Ms. Kelly, if you'll come forward.
Good morning. I have a letter I'd like to get passed out.
If you'll give it to our clerk, and she will pass it out through us. Okay, you may continue.
The letter that you're about to get, and again, hello and happy Valentine's. I'm Kathy Kelly. I'm the owner of Kathy's Pet Resort in Interlock in Florida. Been in animal rescue work in our county for over 30 years, was one of the original members of our Humane Society back in '78, and picked up cans and newspaper on the side of the road to build the Humane Society. So, animal care is very important to me. I make my living on animals, so I give back to the animals. As you look at this letter, this letter refers to December 21st, the last day of school. I board dogs for a lot of the schoolteachers, as well as staff at Interlock and High School and the surrounding area. I got three phone calls that day asking me. A dog had wandered up to the high school. Animal Control was called, but it was very evident that the dog belonged to someone. The lead was still on the dog where he had bit through it, and the dog was in good weight. The dog didn't have any fleas on him. When he told him to sit, he sat. They said, Kathy, can't you, can't you just give him safe refuge just through the holidays? What if, what if his owner's on vacation? And I agreed with that. I thought, you know, again, I make my living on animals. I give back. So, I said, when Animal Control gets there, just tell them they can bring the dog here. I'll give it safe refuge. We'll put it on social media. We'll put it in the newspaper. We'll try everything we can to find its home. I still have that dog. I've called Animal Control, and Lisa has said they will not pick up the dog. I have talked to Mr. Harvey, Mr. Liebal, concerning different issues at Animal Control. I understand that last week Lisa visited Jacksonville Animal Control, and I, all I can think of is she must felt shame when she left there, because our county does not support our animal world, you know, at all. I was told by one of the commissioners that will not be named, because I said I would not name him, when I said, when animals are just tied to my door and left here, and I'm asked to do animal control work, you know, what am I supposed to tell these people? You know, what am I supposed to say? And I was told, just leave them there. And then when I said, do you really want me to repeat that? And he said, no. He said, no, 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 I take that back. And I believe he did take that back, because he was just like, you know, Animal Control is, has been like the hot potato. Nobody wants it, okay? But meanwhile, all these lives are just being left aside, okay? Now, that dog remains at my place. I pay taxes on six different properties in our county. I think my right is to have that dog picked up, and, and so, that's one issue. I have called numerous times to talk to Lisa. She's not returned my phone call. One of the issues being the scanner. Two years ago, my German Shepherd puppy, at 12 months old, was stolen from my yard, a six-foot fence. It was scanned over at Animal Control, and they, they didn't pick up the chip, okay? I called Lisa, never getting a phone call back, again, to say the reason that your chip, my chip was not picked up is you guys are using Avid scanners. The new scanner is an I.S.O. scanner. It's used widely in the U.S. and abroad, and in Europe. If, even though you think you have a universal scanner, it will not pick up an I.S.O. scan. So, that means those animals aren't going back to their home. They're being killed, okay? So, because I couldn't even get a phone call back, all right, that couldn't, that couldn't be addressed. So, I just want you to know, the scanner that is used at Animal Control is outdated, and animals that people have paid chips, you know, to put chips in their dog, it's worthless, okay? Also, the other thing, and I would like an answer on that, that dog that's at my place. If one of you wanted in your yard, I'd be more than happy to bring it to you, because I think someone needs to address this issue. And the other, the other thing I just wanted to say, that there was an article on the front page of the paper by Lisa, again, from Animal Control, that it shows two dogs tied to the fence of Animal Control with a bag of dog food, okay? In 1999, there was a safe house rule put in, in place where instead of people putting their babies in dumpsters, they would, they could go into a firehouse, or, or any safe place like that, and just hand them a kid, just no questions asked, okay? And this, this story is kind of parallel. Now, I'm not saying the dog is more important than the child. I'm saying it's parallel to this very thing. The person that tied the dog to the fence, they tied the dog to the fence of Animal Control, they left dog food. Now, was it the greatest thing that they could have done? No. But maybe, just maybe, it was the only thing they could have done. We don't know their circumstances. We don't know, as foreclosures rise, people don't have a place for their families, let alone their animals. Now, I know that I, as an animal industry business, I get called all the time. Well, what do we do? Animal Control won't come out. Animal Control won't help us. I pull up to my place to find kittens in my flower boxes, okay? This is ridiculous. You need someone with education in the animal world to, to, to take forth and, and go with it.
All right, Ms. Kelly, we got to start wrapping it up.
Okay, I'm done. I just want, I, this is food for thought. I want to know what we're going to do with that dog, and then those are things that I think you need to address.
Mr. Hammonds is in the back room, right over here in the corner. Mr. Hammonds, would you raise your hand? Okay, Ms. Kelly, you could see him about that.
Okay.
We are working on a better animal control facility, as you've been reading about in the paper, and we've got some land donated near the Sheriff's Department.
That's, that's a building.
I know it's a building, but it's a start of getting them out of the area they're at and doing a better job. So, I encourage you, Animal Control Services, we have a meeting once a month with them. Start attending those. Be part, we want you to be part of the solution. We really want partners in the community, so come and be a part of that. We thank you for your time today, and do see Mr. Hammonds, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any comments? Okay, Faye Sparkman? No? Yes, Huggers, okay. Huggers Club. I think we've already hugged each other to death this morning, but hey, you know, if you want to do it again, we'll...
Anyway, it's been a fun day. Happy Valentine's Day, happy anniversary.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm in favor of having a special meeting in this room to talk about the audit. The other thing I want to talk about is the Huggers Club and how it got started. Mr. Tim Smith always comes down the aisles and talks to everybody. It doesn't matter who you are, whether he likes you or don't, okay? It picked up where Ms. Carrie, Wanda, and Barbara and I, we decided, along with Sparky, what to do. So, today you each got two mints in front of your thing. I hand out over 1,000 mints a year at the VA. Two weeks ago, I was at the VA, and I have to push him in his transport, and you know Mr. Liebal, it's over two or three miles you walk in that building. And I get up to this waiting line to get him in the lab, and a man came by me. I never saw him before in my life, and he said, I think you need a hug. And he gave me one, and you know what made my day? So, I was talking to somebody the other day, and they said, sometimes that's the only hug somebody gets. And it's so impressive to see you four new ones out here in the morning. When we come in, please, Mr. Liebal, join them in the mornings before the meeting. Come out in here and talk to us, because we'd like to make you a hug or two.
If I get slapped, what happens?
I'll deck them for you.
All right, you got a deal.
Ms. Sparkman, let me tell you what I like about, about it, and honestly, and the Honorable Tim Smith said it well this morning. We're not at odds. We might have different views of opinions and how to take care of Putnam County, but we're not going to go fistfight, and that's not our style, and we don't need to do that. We all want a better Putnam County. Might have different ways of going there, but we can be civil to each other. And, you know, and unfortunately, politics are politics, and, and there's always somebody behind the scenes, but, but we're out front, and we want to hear from you, and we're going to disagree. Believe me, half the people like me one day, and the next half like me the next day, and those, it just goes that way. That's the job we chose. That's the job we ran for. That's the job we applied for, for the citizens of Putnam County. And we, we understand that. Some new ones are, are understanding it more than others, but it's, it's a wonderful position to serve the residents of Putnam County, and I think we all should have different views and come to consensus at the end of the day. So, thank you.
Well, you have a good leader sitting right there.
We have some good leaders in this county.
And if you come to any meetings, you'll find out your new attorney is very intelligent and very wise.
I think you stunned our new attorney today by joining the club.
But we might as well have fun and smile. Don't be a frown, and don't get up here and complain. If you have a complaint, keep working on it, just like I did for the road so many years, Mr. Liebal.
Thank you.
But it works.
That goes two ways, by the way.
That's right, that's right.
Did you come and see it? Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Cindy Locke?
Hi, I'm Cindy, or Cynthia Locke, and I reside at 109 Momma Lane, and I'm here to address the non-enforcement and lack of provisions of the hogwaller mud bog P.U.D. By not enforcing the P.U.D. at the hogwaller, the county is allowing an atmosphere of overcrowding at these events. Exceeding a loud number of campers and parking generates an unsafe environment in the park, which is now spilling out onto County Road 310. The last event, the traffic had, was backed up for miles east and west, causing unsafe traffic safety conditions on our roadway, on County Road 310. The noise, of course, that generates from the ATVs riding all day and night, along with the mud bogging, is a nuisance. There are over several thousand people attend these 24-hour events, entering and exiting with campers, trailers, and loaded with ATVs and mud trucks. Now, the hogwaller advertises its venue on Facebook, the home of the four-day weekend. This is because the current P.U.D. now allows early entrance on Thursdays. Sometimes they're out there on Wednesdays. We are asking for relief in the form of restricted hours by establishing normal business hours for entering and leaving the park. Just say, if the park opened at 8:00 a.m. and closed at 9:00 p.m. for non-campers, this would create a quiet zone benefiting not only the neighboring property owners for, from noise, but also the people camping. Restricted hours would alleviate the traffic conditions and safety within the park and on our county roads. Allowing alcohol in the park to stay open for entering 24 hours a day enables the park to become an outdoor 24-hour party, along with ATV riding. Prohibiting alcohol and establishing reasonable hours of operation would reduce the noise and the traffic safety. In a board meeting, their consultant lauded these events as being eco-friendly. The participants and campers ride 24 hours a day on wetlands with vehicles that leave behind hazardous materials, requiring mitigation through St. John's River Water Management to do so. While under the influence of alcohol, this disturbs the ecosystem, wildlife, and humans. This is not ecotourism. My questions to the board is, why does the county approve P.U.D.s if codes and enforcement is understaffed, and they cannot enforce them? Why are we not concerned about the environmental impact? And sadly, I have learned, oh, excuse me, and why allow these events to go on 24 hours and allow alcohol when there are young adults and children attending these 24-hour events? Sadly, I learned there was an accident on Highway 19 involving an 18-year-old, allegedly under the influence and allegedly coming from the hogwaller in this, in the early morning this past super bog weekend. And let's not forget the child that lost its life out there in, at the mud bog in 2012. Shouldn't the county be concerned about the many injuries and accidents that occur at these events? I gave you the activity log from the Sheriff's Department from 2016 to the last event. There's injuries, accidents, fights, gun discharge, fuel spillage. Apparently, what goes on at the hogwaller stays at the hogwaller, as nothing is reported in the news. The county has as much responsibility as the owner when it comes to the safety of the people who attend these events, as well as the safety on our county roads from the traffic coming and leaving. Enforcing the violations of the P.U.D. like exceeding camping and parking is a safety issue. The owner posts on his Facebook page, they will turn no one away to these events. This business is creating an image for our community and the growth of our county. I'm encouraging the board and all, and everyone out here, to Google mud bogging videos, and look what goes on at these events. Is this the image we want for our community? A four-day weekend event where you can party 24 hours, drink alcohol, ride your ATV and mud trucks, and waller in the mud. The hogwaller P.U.D. needs to be reconsidered, and it needs to be enforced. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Mr. Hammonds, do you have any comments you'd like to...? No?
Not, nobody does.
Mr. Hammonds is in the back of the room. I'm sure if the violation of P.U.D. has happened, we will look at that.
Well, and I think the board needs to consider, look at this activity log. We, we checked the paper for any arrests out there at the hogwaller. There's none. But look at the activity log. You've got fights, injuries, accidents, theft.
Yes, ma'am.
There's no arrest? I don't understand.
We have, he has a P.U.D., and it is enforceable, and Mr. Hammonds is, Mr. Hammonds, raise your hand again, sir? Okay.
We know who Mr. Hammonds is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Locke. Okay, that's the end of my blue cards. Is there anybody that would like to speak for public comment without a card? Yes, please come up, state your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Janet Smith, 60 Carefree Drive, in Willaka.
Good morning, Ms. Smith.
Good morning. In light of the just-released, amazing, and troubling findings by the state auditors about Putnam County, I really do not envy your positions in dealing with this big bucket of snakes and worms you've been handed back. My thoughts go out to you for that. We recently and frequently heard on the campaign trail, keep me accountable. I want to do what's right for the county. Well, here it is. Going forward, consider whom you are taking your counsel from in making decisions. Who among you was around during those years that those specific problematic decisions that were appointed to by the auditors? That was very specific in what years. Is that who you should continue to take all your counsel from? Both appointed and elected persons played a role in going down the wrong paths. The number of unanimous decisions made in the past were remarkable. Look where it led us. The question now is, will you do your own thinking and research before a vote? Indeed, actually taking into consideration those who not only pay your salary, but have done research before rendering another one of those unanimous votes. That would be a good way of being accountable. Reread the details of that audit report. Give it some thoughtful consideration to the real questions. Will you continue to be just another part of unanimous decisions, or will you do your own thinking? Who will you take your counsel from? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next person, Mary Kay, please come up. State your name and your address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have to say this. Tim Smith is the type of person who really personifies the word friend. He's there for you. He returns... I've had so many times when people, their families, have left, they leave their animals, so I try and find homes for them. I even got to the point, one time, I rescued a rottweiler. I'm used to little dogs. And I rescued him, I put him on my property. I kept him, he was in stage four heartworms, and he was part of our family. He lived a good life, those last lives, but I hate to see that happen. And Kathy needs all the help she can get. She's a wonderful person who knows about animal, animal control, and you're very lucky if you can draw her out and be on your team. But I am here this morning. My name is Mary Kay Engelking, and I'm a post office box, but I don't know what it is right now. I want to be here to talk to you about our Nefar Bass Tournament. I am a member of the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors. And in 2004, I was asked to be the chair of the Putnam Council of Realtors. And I said, "Yeah." And then I thought, you know, I'd love to do something to give back to the community. And so, and it was also in memory of my sister. We are a Bass capital, so I started a Bass tournament. And this is coming up in April. It will be our 14th year for our tournament. So what I did to learn about Bass tournaments, I went to all these tournaments and learned a lot of what is in demanding. But the great thing is, I hired an individual who takes care of our anglers, our fishermen, and that will never change. And what he does is the same routine that we've always done. But this year, we have a lot more vendors, things for children, our kids. So just to let you know, please come out and have a great day. It is going to be April the 29th. And the reason we have a large turnout of our anglers from all over the state and out of the state is our payout. Our payouts are really more than any other Bass tournament gives you. Like on your $5,000 guaranteed payout to the first place in a tournament. So take it from there. So if you would, share the word. It's going to be a great tournament, as usual. We have fun, you meet a lot of people, the kids are involved. And like I said, this is something I have given back to the community. This is my home. I love doing things like that, getting involved, and it does bring a lot of revenue to our county also. So keep us in mind, and God bless you and have a blessed day.
Mary Kay, if you could get that, is Bob, are you still in the room?
I didn't do it.
Yeah, he possibly could put that on our website, or possibly put it on our Comcast channel. So get with Bob on that.
Sounds terrific to me.
We appreciate you coming for that. Thank you very much. Bass tournaments are important in Putnam County. They bring in a lot of money. And not only that, we get a chance to showcase Putnam County to anglers from all over the world. So we appreciate that, and we appreciate it.
You know, when I went, when I started, I thought, you know, I got to go to City Hall, you got to get a permit, and there's a schedule. Well, you have to plan a year in advance to have, you know, schedule for the waterfront. And I didn't realize that. So we always have to schedule a year in advance for our tournament. But I got Robert, I can't think of his name, Oglesby. And he gets it scheduled within the city when our timeline is open, because I learned there's like four Bass tournaments going on every weekend. There's a hole out there, and somebody's got a fishing rod, and it's a tournament, so...
Bass are not safe coming up here.
They are not. Run, fishy, run! But it's great, and the people have a lot of fun, and I'm very proud of my accomplishment there to Putnam County. And thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak before we close the public comments? Okay, Roxanne Weeks, come up, please. You're on the agenda also, so, okay.
A different item. Good morning. Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Roxanne Weeks. I live in Palaca, Florida. I first want to thank Ms. Kelly for addressing the animal issue. Once again, this is a continuing problem. The, we've brought up before, before the commission, that we would like to form a nonprofit foundation and hire actual animal people to run the facility, as they do in Flagler County, that county subcontracts, to people that are knowledgeable and handle the issues. The other thing I want to address in the audit findings, they do all point to the management of this county. And complacency by the prior commissioners. It is perfect timing that the issue of these Bass tournaments are brought up. I want to say that my understanding is that Mr. Leary operates without a contract and has for the last couple of years. That was one of the things in the audit findings, there's a problem with no contracts. I read in Friday's paper about the derelict boats in the riverfront. There were seven boats sunken, five have been identified as a navigational hazard. The county administrator put it out to bids to remove the five, was $57,000. That's a very involved process to raise and remove a sunken boat. The city, in the meantime, removed one of the five that were the hazards. So there's now four. The bid should go down probably to 50 or less. The problem I have is, it was already put out the public bid, the lowest was that. It needs to be accepted. Our first Bass tournament is scheduled in three weeks, on March 4th and 5th. Mr. Leary's quoted in the Friday paper as saying he's not satisfied with the bids, they already got one grant, he wants to combine some county money with it and spend a max of $33,000. That's not going to cover it. These hazards need to be removed, not only for the citizens that boat here, but also, these Bass tournaments are nationally televised. Let somebody have an accident, and it be discovered that it's already known these hazards have existed. They've, I've seen it talked about for the last year. It irritates me that, you know, to say, "Well, I don't like this, and I'm going to put it off, and I'm going to put it out to bid again and maybe apply for another grant." $50,000 is nothing for the money that the audit has shown has been wasted. This is something that is a matter of safety and needs to be addressed. And when these boaters come here, if something happens, that's going to wreck it for this county. We need those tournaments. And I want you to take some kind of action, to make a decision, and move forward with getting those boats out of the water. Not, it takes months to put it out to public bid again and apply for another grant and all of this. $50,000 is peanuts for the safety of our people, and we need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Thank you very much. All right, anybody else in the audience before I close the public comment portion? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting and go into consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items to be polled, starting on my right with Commissioner Libel?
Item H, Mr. Chairman.
Item H, okay. Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Okay. To my left, Commissioner Pickens.
I would just like to make a comment on G.
On which one?
G.
G, okay. So, and I would like to look at P, R, S, and T. So let's take them in order. And Commissioner Libel, no, Commissioner Pickens, I'm sorry. Item G.
I'd just like to point out, I just am very pleased that the county is going to continue to enter into a lease agreement with the city of Crescent City to house a government complex in Crescent City, with the tax collector's office and then presidents from the clerk of court. It's just an extremely convenient venue for our citizens to be able to get their tags, pay their property taxes, and do other government work. So I just appreciate that. It's, sometimes it's a hardship for people in South Putnam to come all the way to Palaca, get those services taken care of. So I just appreciate the county continuing that contract.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Honorable Tim Smith, I'll give you a chance in just a second, but I want to mention H myself, and I think Commissioner Libel, you wanted to mention H. Is that correct?
Yes.
Would you say A?
A.
Yes, I got H.
Okay. Want me to take it?
Yes, please.
Ready? Okay. It's just some technical on the amendment itself, the rate of rent is not listed as monthly. It is on our agenda packet here, but not here. I don't know if it makes a difference, Stacy, or not, but it was, I would say, is that $2,140.77 for a year or a month? I'm sure it's a month.
It's a month.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
It is a month.
Thank you, Commissioner Libel, for pointing that out. I would also like to echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Pickens. You know, Putnam County, we often talk about, is so spread out, and you've got South Putnam and West Putnam, and then the centralized part of Putnam County, Palaca area. And it's just a really, you know, I remember the, Mike Noon had the motorhome pulled up to the power outlet on the light pole out there at the Hitchcock, or then it was Miller's Plaza. And the receptacles are still there, where he plugged in for the first mobile unit that went out and took care of the citizens in the outlining areas. And I just really want to say, previous boards, Mr. Administrator, Honorable Tim Smith are constitutional officers. It's a pleasure to have these offices represented in the West End. And I'd like, Tim, if you would, say a few comments about that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we likewise appreciate that the county works with us to lease these facilities for us. One, the one in Interlaken is in the Hitchcock Shopping Center. The one in Crescent City is the former City Hall. When Crescent City moved, we actually worked with them to lease that facility from them. And it gives us an opportunity to provide services to the west and to the south end of our county, without having to drive that distance to get here. And, you know, we hear periodically during the year that Putnam County is a transportation disadvantaged community, and they are. And so, for us to be able to offer those services really is beneficial to a lot of As things have become more technologically advanced and more digitized, it's necessary for us to be able to have good internet connections to those facilities. We're working currently with Bob Stender in IT to look at bumping up the capacity. You know, it's kind of, it's like a pipe, and you can only push so much data through it. But because we are data-driven now, particularly with what Ms. Myers does in the tax collector side, all those services that you would go downtown here for, you can avail yourself of at both of those. Also, Mr. Overturf is still in the back. That facility is used not only for voter registration, but it's a polling place, a very nice facility that he takes advantage of in the back end of the building, of worked real hard to make that a nice polling site. So I thank you for those lease agreements. They basically have stayed the same ever since we've had those leases. They don't have much of an increase in those year to year, but we can take advantage of those as not only your constitutional officers, but in citizens to take advantage of access to those facilities. So it is a great opportunity for us to serve the citizens. And then in the spring, Tim Parker, he sets up down there and out in the west, so that folks that want to either apply or renew your homestead exemption, you can do that without having to come to Palaca. The only thing that we don't do from the clerk's perspective in South Putnam is, is we try not to handle applications for domestic violence there, because we want those individuals that are in need to try to get to Palaca, where there are additional services that are offered by the Lee Conley House. So we try to, if we have those come in and there's a need, we try to make sure that they get to Palaca and take advantage of those additional services. But everything else that you can do in our campuses here, you can do in those satellite facilities. So once again, thank you for those leases.
Thank you, sir. I do have a comment. Mr. Leary, we pulled item D off of the consent.
Yes, sir, if you would, that would be, we'd like to defer that until later.
Yeah, we're going to pull that for a future, okay, for a future date. Item O, page 69 of your agenda, let me, that was... I wanted to explain to you, fellow board members and to the audience, that I appointed a lady, Mrs. Slaughter, to this ship housing program back, I think it was the end of last year, only to find out that she was going through the process to receive some funds, which I was unaware of. So I called her, asked her if she would resign from that Affordable Housing Committee. She graciously did that, and last month, we appointed Paula Nichols in her stead. So just for you to know, I was unaware that she was going through it. And for any, all transparencies, I wanted that to be on the table. Item P, Mr. Preston, are you able to talk a little bit about item P on the ship funds, the $241,000? Could you come up and, and we had a ship meeting last month, and we discussed some items, and this was one of them. And it's, it looks like we're sending back a lot of money, but the money came with a lot of strings to it. So, Mr. Preston, if you would, kind of briefly, at the 30,000-foot level, discuss that, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, just before Mr. Preston makes his remarks, I think the actual number is not 241, it's actually $235,683, just for the record.
That's correct. I remember that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Ed Preston, Northeast Florida Regional Counsel. We indeed have made a recommendation to send back the money, it was for disaster relief, through the ship housing program. We acted on the advice of the Housing Committee. The issue on the money is that the string that came attached to it was that all unexpended funds had to be spent first, before that money could be spent. And Putnam County has a rather lengthy waiting list of applicants, and the Advisory Committee felt like that it was of utmost importance to serve the people that had been waiting two years and three years, rather than to access those funds. Those funds also have to be spent by June, and we felt like that it was best to follow the advice of the Advisory Committee meeting.
And also, if I remember correctly, we only had a few phone calls about any type of assistance through that program, but they would have to meet the lower income requirements anyway.
That's correct. Applicants would have to meet the same criteria as the ones on the waiting list.
Right. So we want to help people, we just couldn't, we couldn't do with the strings that came with the money, and so the committee decided against that. Thank you, Mr. Preston, for your clarification. Commissioners, page 73 of your consent agenda, I wanted to talk about the resolution for a joint meeting with the St. John, the governing body of St. John's County. I would like to, with your approval, add Clay and Volusia just in the future, if we decide to do that, so we don't have to keep coming back with more resolutions. Would that be okay, Mr. Leary?
Yes, sir. Will I add that?
And Mr. Attorney, are you okay with that?
Yes, although I'd like to see that in the form of a motion, amending that resolution.
All right, so you want to take item R separately?
Let's do that.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens. I almost called you Representative Pickens, I'm sorry. Okay, do we have a proper second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Goddard, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay. So the resolution now is that we can meet with St. John's, Clay, Volusia. On this resolution, we've already passed one to meet with Lachua and Marion County. So we're really spreading out into the community, and we look forward to those conversations. The next item on the agenda, item S, I asked Colonel Wells, is that correct? Okay. Okay, Colonel Wells, if you would come up, and let's talk a little bit about page 74 and 76 on your agenda, about the expenditures. And Sheriff? Thank you, Sheriff, you're not Colonel Wells.
That's all right, you can call me whatever you like.
That's fine, Mr. Sheriff.
This request specifically is a request to disburse money from the Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund, which is an account the Sheriff's Office maintains for the dispersment of seized drug monies and assets that are liquidated, and the proceeds then deposited into that. Pursuant to Florida statute, the Sheriff's Office is required to have a governing board, which is this commission that oversees those expenditures, and we're asking... Pursuant to Florida statute, the Sheriff's Office is required to have a governing board, which is this commission that oversees those expenditures. And we're asking that you approve the dispersal of $25,000 for donations to be made to the Lee Connolly House, the Road Heaver Boys Ranch, and the Putnam County Sheriff's Office Police Athletic League. All of these are 501(c)(3) organizations that operate here within our county. And two of, what we look at specifically whenever we're looking for organizations to receive these funds is, number one, first and foremost, they have to have a nexus to a reduction in crime. And we like to, for charities to receive benefit that benefit children, victims of domestic violence, and when the time permits, animals as well. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Sheriff. Any questions, Commissioner, for the Sheriff?
No, just a big thank you. This is very honorable, and we appreciate, especially the entities it's going to.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a card here from Roxanne Weeks, who would like to speak about Agenda Item S. Ms. Weeks?
As Mr. Deloach stated, it is allowable that these seizure funds, their seizure and forfeiture monies, are allowed by statute to be given to 501(c)(3) nonprofits. But it also requires that the first 15% off the top be spent on crime prevention. I watched Sheriff Hardy several times do this same donation to Lee Connolly and Road Haver, and without spending the required 15% on crime prevention. And the citizens need that. I'd also like to question the source of the funds. Oh, the required 15%, one of the things that the statute allows is for these seizure funds to be, as we said, donated to a charity, but also to be spent for enhancement items for deputies. That could be bulletproof vests, additional arms, whatever they need, not the daily operational cost. And I would like to, even if he is donating the entire, after the 15% crime prevention, even if he's donating the entire 85% to the charities, that leaves at least $4,500 that is required for the crime prevention. So I'd like to know the ratios on that and see that that's being spent for the community. And I'd also like to know the source of the funds. Specifically, has there been a $30,000 seizure lately, or were these funds already sitting in this account previously? So that's what I'd like answered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to, Sheriff, would you like to respond to that? Thank you, sir.
I have a question too, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sir, thank you.
These are seizures that are taken in over a period of time. There's not been any substantial seizures that have been deposited into this account recently. However, I would like to address a couple of the concerns that Mrs. Weeks brought up. These monies are not allowed to be used to purchase items such as bulletproof vests or additional firearms. There are mechanisms available in our budget where we purchase those. We're also looking at participating in a grant that's available through the Department of Justice that would reimburse us at least a portion of the bulletproof vests that we're now wearing under a mandatory wear policy. So again, there's no specific mechanism in place that allows this money to be used for the purchase of those items. More specifically, we operate in accordance with Florida statutes with regard to the spending and dispersal of this money, including the 15% that goes towards crime prevention.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lavo, you had a question?
And that for you, Sheriff Deloach, the 15% is capped at 15% or can it encumber 100% of the cost?
It can, up to, up to over 15% actually, yes.
So the entities you just named, all are crime preventing--
Yes, that, I mean, there's an obvious crime prevention nexus to each one of these organizations, yes.
In your opinion, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Weeks, if you have a quick--
Can we go, Mr. Chairman?
We really need to move on, but please come up to the microphone real quick.
What, what, I've misunderstood the statute, obviously. So I'd like to explain what benefit is for the department and the deputies. What are they allowed to spend it on if not, you know, the bulletproof vest or things like that that I've mentioned?
Well, I'm sure Sheriff will contact you on that, and us too, if you will, okay? Okay, item, my next item I wanted to talk about was page 77 of your packet, Fleet Maintenance. This is coming to us from Bill Roulan. Bill, would you come up and explain this, just to me, please? And, Mr. Roulan, let me set the stage for you. It seems like when I read this packet, and I should have called you, and I just ran out of time, frankly, it seems like we're fixing to give a whole lot of responsibility to you to purchase items outside of our procurement policy. And I have reservations about that, so help me get over that if you don't mind.
Fair enough. Just to give you a quick overview of our department for some of the newer commissioners here, we obviously, as a whole, as the county, we have well over 650 pieces of equipment. Our department consists of four mechanics to take care of all those pieces of equipment. Medium range of the equipment in terms of age is 10 to 12 years, okay? So obviously, with the downturn in the economy and so forth, we have really not purchased new equipment to keep it up to date and be able to service it at just a quick level, in and out, boom, goes back into service. So we're dealing with a lot of older equipment, a lot more time involved, a lot more repairs involved, a lot more breakdowns involved. What we've experienced, basically, is with this aging equipment and these repairs that are required, we're having to gain more and more coming into the shop. We don't have the personnel to continue. So we have alternate means, which is subletting it out to other locations and having it repaired accordingly. With all the audit-related issues and so forth, what we've done is tried to bring those in and cause, basically, what's caused is backlogs in terms of getting quotes, doing things of that nature. We're not asking for, you know, a free ride in terms of just go here, go there, go there. We're just trying to speed along the process and be able to continue the flow, allow the departments to continue working and keep the equipment moving and the projects working. So that's basically all we're looking for. One of our main things is some of the parts that are associated here. When we continue to buy them, we hit those limits, and now we're at the $25,000 limit with some of the vendors. We need to surpass that to continue moving forward and then go from there.
Isn't that bypassing our procurement office that--
We're not bypassing in the sense, we still will continue to get quotes on repairs. We will still continue to stay in that thing there. What we need to is just have some tools in the toolbox to allow us in certain situations to be able to say, look, this is a vendor-only product, we know it has to go to, say, Ring Power, which is Caterpillar dealer, okay? Instead of going out and saying, well, this guy over here may be able to work on a Caterpillar, but we know it's a dealer only, let's go directly here without getting a quote, and then, boom, we get it done back on the road, and then the service continues. I'm not looking for an open checkbook or anything of that nature. We're going to stay as best we can with the procurement procedures in place and purchasing. And basically, we're trying to streamline some of the things to keep the other departments working and moving as quickly as possible, because we've experienced a backlog. And a lot of departments have made complaints and had situations like that. We're just trying to have a little better avenue to move it forward and then go from there.
Would your department be the only department that would have this authority to go out and do what you're spending the money, other than, other departments don't have that ability? So your fleet maintenance would be--
We're fleet maintenance, and, you know, obviously, in the big picture, everybody is somehow attached to fleet maintenance, because everybody has equipment, they have trucks, they have vehicles, they have this, that, and everything. But everything essentially comes to us when it goes down, meaning their projects will stop until such time as it's addressed through our department. So this is really just an avenue to allow us in situations to be able to say, look, we need to go here, let's get this done as quickly as possible. And I'm sure you've heard it, and all of you have heard it from your districts, saying, hey, how come this isn't done? How come we couldn't get this done? And it always comes down to, oh, well, the piece of equipment is down, and we're waiting for it to come back up. So it's just a path or a tool to be able to move some of those things faster, have a direct route. Again, we're not looking for an open checkbook. We're not asking to say, hey, just let fleet maintenance do whatever they can without checking with anybody or doing anything. We're still going to get quotations, we're still going to try to follow procurement procedures as best as we can. But again, we just need the slight flexibility to move some of these projects and some of this older equipment faster back out into the field to finish what we need to get done.
I think, in light of the audit and some of the statements that were made in there, I just have a real problem going forward on this item today, and I think I need some more-- (applause) I'm sorry, I, let's not, I just need some more explanation, I think. And I'd like to bring this back to a workshop where we can really dissect it if you don't mind.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I mean, I know it's, it's a tough thing to swallow, and I understand that, you know? And again, be aware that we're not asking for a direct, you know, boom, hey, just give them a free check and let them go. We're not asking that at all.
I'm one commissioner, and the other commissioners here might feel differently, so--
And I'd like a chance to--
Commissioner Lavo, please.
I think, I have a background in this, as you well know, and the job that you do with four men is nothing short of amazing.
That's right.
It really is. And I have heard the departments, when they're, you've got their vehicles tied up, particularly the fire departments, where public safety is subject to being late to the scenes, as we say. I would suggest that we, when you feel comfortable with it, give him a green light on this with the stipulations that we do an internal audit within six months to see how it's going. Because he is unique, he does touch every, everything you just told you is real. He does have to be treated differently, or we're going to have to hire more personnel to help him. And I think this is a better way to go.
Commissioner, I'd really know to thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As comptroller, I might suggest that if you do delay this a little while, that we'll be glad to work with his department and with Mr. Manning to look at opportunities to make sure that there are proper controls in place before then we're asked to cut the check.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
So we volunteer to help you with that.
Chairman?
Perfect.
Yeah, Bill, I've talked with Bill about this before, and I understand what he's going through. He's trying his best to make sure that our equipment is put out there, but again, you don't want the open checkbook.
Oh, no, no. And trust me, you know, anybody that's known me, it was to me, I would prefer to do everything in-house. And that's, again, with the personnel, you know? I'm the type of person, I don't send anything out. I fix everything myself, you know? And that's just the way I like to do it, because, again, we're mechanics, and that's what we're paid to do. Why are we sending things to mechanics? But unfortunately, we don't have that ability here. We don't have the personnel, nor do we have the ability to hire them. So we have to look for alternative methods. And again, I am not asking for a blank check, just a pathway.
Yeah, I've seen some of the stuff you've had to work on. You're miracle workers, not mechanics.
I appreciate that.
But, yeah, I think you've got things moving in the right way due to the audit. We definitely want to make sure--
Oh, yeah.
--everything is in place the way it's supposed to be.
There are other avenues that we'd like to explore in terms of these things, but right now, we're in a bind, and we're just trying to move it for, and then, again, that's why I stated it was one year, this fiscal year only, until all the things be put in place, other avenues can be explored. You know, it's just, it's like, we still have to move, we never stop.
Yeah, I believe we're going to move on this pretty quick. I don't want to speak out of turn, but, yes, it needs to be addressed.
Commissioner Pickens?
If you put this to a workshop, what's the timeframe where the workshop, and then where we could pass it, I guess, the next commission meeting?
I believe we could look at it next Tuesday at our workshop and possibly put it back on the agenda for the 28th of February. Could we do that, Mr. Leary? And Mr. Smith, would that work in your timeframe?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that was for one, again, I'm sorry?
We'll workshop it next Tuesday?
Sure, sure.
And then we'll put it back on the agenda for February 28th.
Is it possible, while I'm up here, to pull part of this apart right now with respect to our expenditures for parts? Because we have that $25,000 threshold, we have several vendors, which are factory-only items, that we've hit that number, and it requires your approval for us to move past that point through General Services to continue at least for that. You know, we'll put the sublet things and that to the side, but I still, you know, it doesn't stop.
I think we're going to have to take it as a whole, and we'll do that next Tuesday.
So you want to leave it as a whole till next Tuesday?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll talk about it next Tuesday and dissect it, give us time to get through it.
Okay.
And then if you need to break it up in pieces to have different parts, we'll talk about that also, okay?
Okay.
Commissioners, since we, we're going to--
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you so much, Bill, for that. I think we should vote on Item T separately, if we want to do that. So the Chair will entertain a motion on Item T.
Let's, why don't you frame that again, of what we're--
I would like for Item T to be brought to a workshop on the 21st, next Tuesday, and for us to have a discussion about it, and then bring it back to the agenda on February 28th.
Okay, move approval.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Lavo. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the ayes have it. And now we are looking for a proper motion on the consent agenda with all the items we talked about, with the, with Item D being polled from the agenda and Item T already being voted on.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, that we take A, B, C, E, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, Q, R, S, and U.
R was already voted on as well, with the amendment.
Yes, we did, thank you, I'm sorry, with the exception of R. Okay, so we have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, and there's no nays. And we'll take a three-minute break while Sheriff Gator Deloach prepares for the crime stopper prevention. We convene at 10:35. Sheriff Deloach, you have the floor, sir. Thank you very much.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
I wanted to come in front of the board just briefly this morning to talk a little bit about our uniform crime reporting and some of our crime statistics from this year and recent years past. UCR, or Uniform Crime Reporting, is a voluntary program that was actually instituted in 1929 by the FBI to measure crime at the national level and at the state and local level as well. UCR is problematic, to say the least. It's a very complex and often misunderstood subject that's very often misinterpreted by the media and/or special interest groups to promote their own agenda at times. The Sheriff's Office actually reports crimes that are investigated by the Sheriff's Office in the unincorporated areas of the county, school district properties, and the town of Pomona Park. And the reason for this is because the school district and these municipalities do not have their own individual municipal law enforcement agencies who are responsible for reporting these. So we report for the school district, Pomona Park, and the unincorporated areas. The city of Palaca, Willaca, Crescent City, and Interlochen are responsible for reporting their own crime statistics, which are then fed into the Florida Department of Law Enforcement's computers and submitted to the FBI.
Sheriff, I have a question before--
Yes, sir.
I thought the school system had their own law enforcement agency inside there.
They do. They're not a full-service law enforcement agency, and they focus mainly on truancy.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So the overall crime report that you'll see that's included in this packet, and in the interest of time, I'll keep my remarks brief in respect of everyone's schedule today. But if you like, we can certainly drill down on some of these issues later on at another time. So we actually, the crime report for the county actually includes all of these municipalities combined from every agency that operates inside of Putnam County up to and including the Sheriff's Office. You'll see, as you look at the next slide, and I didn't bring my glasses, so I'm going to have to go to a bigger version of it.
Are you old enough to need glasses?
You'll see that the Sheriff's Office, specifically as a whole, from the year 2008 through the current year, or past year, 2016, has actually reported a 68% reduction in crime. Now, please bear in mind, this is only in the unincorporated areas. If you'll look down to the next segment, you'll see that overall, Putnam County, including all agencies-- agencies, which includes, of course, the city of Palaca and all those other municipalities that we spoke of earlier, has seen a 46% reduction in overall crimes. Now, you'll notice there was a slight increase in 2015. I have not yet seen the UCR reports from the city of Palaca and the other municipalities yet. So I don't yet know what the 2016 numbers will look like. I can only speak for the sheriff's office, specifically for 2016, if that makes sense.
The acronym UCR, what is that again?
Uniform Crime Reporting.
Okay.
And again, that's a program that was instituted by the FBI back in the 20s. It's very complex and archaic. It's actually scheduled to be replaced by another program, another reporting program called NIBR, or National Incident-Based Reporting System, which is a much more modernized version, if you will, of UCR that collects data more real-time as opposed to semi-annually and annually. And we can talk a little bit more about some of the subtle nuances of those two in just a few minutes. As we move along to the next slide, you'll see that in the unincorporated areas of the county, again, including the school district properties and Pomona Park, from the years 2015 through 2016, we actually saw a 12% or a little over 12% reduction. And again, from 2008 to 2016, a 68% reduction. Again, some of this is redundant, but I want to really drill down hard on these numbers. In the year 2014 and 15, the total crime rate in Putnam County actually saw a 1.2% increase. And again, from 2018 through 2015, there was an overall 46.5% reduction in crime within the county. And again, those... The 2016 numbers have not yet been released for Putnam County by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement because they're still waiting for those other municipalities to submit their own respective UCR records.
Sheriff Deloche, real quick, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Pomona Park disbanded their police department in what year?
Oh, gosh, that's been a number of years ago. I'm not sure of the exact year.
Does it predate this '08 date?
Yes, it's been in excess of probably 20 years. The Putnam County Sheriff's Office actually has a team that's trained in reporting these crime statistics and making sure that all of the reports are accurate. All of these reports prior to submission to the state are inspected, resulting in our agency actually having attained a statewide reputation of excellence in crime reporting. And again, we're committed to keeping our citizens accurately informed in current crime trends. Something that I want to point out is that semi-annual reports that are published occasionally are not always accurate indicators of the final actual crime statistics for any given year and should certainly not be used to show crime trend changes from the previous year. Recently, there was some information that was presented to the BOCC and staff as evidence of false claims of crime reduction that were misleading and inaccurately interpreted. PCSO, as we saw, reported a nearly 13% reduction in crime for the entire year of 2016, again, for the areas that PCSO is responsible for reporting. Now, while we're certainly concerned with the other municipalities, I don't have access to their data and can't offer any interpretation of it at this point. So a semi-annual report, again, is a partial report for all jurisdictions and should be viewed as that as a semi-annual report.[866.29][866.29](pause) Are there any questions? I know there's a lot of information there in front of you. There's some additional slides there as well that go back and show some of the historic data from years past, I think all the way back to 2008. And if any of you have any questions on those, I'll be happy to answer those as well.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, please.
So the purpose of your visit today and this slideshow is, are you experiencing misconceptions of the stats at an alarming rate, or is the media reading it wrong?
No, but that does happen quite frequently, actually. And, you know, something that's often touted as an increase in crime, if we take homicide, for example, every life is important to us. But if we look specifically at homicide, we have very few homicides here per year as opposed to, say, Jacksonville. So statistically, if we have a relatively small increase in the number of homicides, if we go from two to, say, seven, we see an almost 200% increase in our uniform crime reporting statistics
On paper, it looks bad.
For homicide on paper for that particular year, if that makes sense.
Yep. And that can happen in one setting, as it has in history.
Absolutely.
I see.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Well, there's a notable difference between 2009 and 2016. And I'm looking at the murder, rapes, robbery aggravated. I mean, it's incredible how crime has really went down.
Yes, and that actually, you know, that's certainly due in part to the efforts of our deputies. That's also following a statewide trend all the way across the state.
Do you think it's some of our laws that the legislators have passed, the get-tough laws, if you will? I mean...
I'm sure that probably has some influence on it.
I bet it's technology.
And technology has a lot to do with it. It's funny you mention that. We actually have a suite of software at the sheriff's office that actually maps out crime for us, and we can use it as a predictive tool to identify areas where we're having problems and anticipate future problems, so we can increase our patrols there.
I wonder how many people from 2009 are incarcerated today that would be out causing problems. Maybe that would help some of us. I'm just...
Sure.
You know, thinking out loud, but some things happen to reduce those numbers quite frequently. And maybe they're all incarcerated, and the rest of them are going, I don't want to go there.
Sure. And, you know, I did say again that, you know, this is following that same statewide trend, although we have experienced a much more significant reduction in crime here locally than across the state.
Well, you know, I appreciate that. And I'll tell you this. I mentioned at the last meeting that your deputy came door-to-door advising neighbors in my area to lock their cars at night because some... Somebody without... Probably kids or whatever, it doesn't matter who it was, but they were out going through cars, unlocked cars. And it would only make sense to lock your cars. So... And that was very... I haven't seen that done in a long, long time.
Sure. I can tell you that in 2008, whenever... Prior to us adopting the district policing concept we operate under now, it was not uncommon for us to see 30 or 40 burglaries per district, or sometimes 90 to 100 countywide, for a monthly period. Those numbers now vary and fluctuate sometimes, but we're very often in the single digits for burglaries that are reported to the sheriff's office for a monthly period in any one given district.
Sheriff, what does the acronym D A B T represent?
Which page are you on?
Next to the last. You have all the agencies, sheriff's office, Palaca, Crescent City, Interlocken, Wilaaca.
Okay, that's gonna refer to the Division of Alcoholic Beverages and Tobacco. You'll see that those statewide agencies are also responsible for submission of UCR statistics in each of their respective jurisdictions across the state.
All right.
All right. Commissioners, any other comments? Any comments? Thank you, Sheriff.
That's encouraging.
We appreciate your presentation, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
And come back again anytime with this guy.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda, Carrie Hawkins, Northeast Florida Education Consortium Rural Partnership for Healthy Kids Grant, page 88 of your packet.[1145.33][1145.33](applause)
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I am representing a grant that is in Putnam County. It's in nine counties, actually. And we are over at NEFEC off Reed Street. Basically, what we're doing is we are going to schools, we're going into the communities, we're talking to agencies and counties and cities, whoever we can speak to, to help us reach families, to get them signed up for health insurance. That's what we do. We help... We work through Florida Kid Care, which is... I actually have a presentation I can put up on my...[1185.83][1185.83](pause)
Here he comes now.
I can get to it. There it is.[1197.51][1197.51](pause)
There you go.
Yeah. If I can do that.[1203.42][1203.42](pause) I actually started. Just a check. Okay. But I'll be brief. I won't touch on all this stuff.
Okay.
Basically, we are reaching families to get them signed up for health insurance. We provide the computer, we provide the internet. We... Anything that they need, we help them print things. We have a mobile printer. We basically are a mobile office. They can come to us. We go to the schools. We're in the schools. We're partnered with Putnam County Schools. We have a MOU with them, which means that we can have access to data, you know, social security numbers, whatever we need, whatever's gonna help the families get them access to the health insurance. And what's interesting about Florida is we are fifth in the US for children being uninsured. So we're behind California and Texas, things like that. But 70% of our uninsured kids qualify for these programs, which are $0 to $15 to $20. So zero... Between $0 and $20, you can cover your entire family of children, all your children. So it doesn't apply to adults. But it is very helpful for our working families. This is who we're targeting, working families, college students, the working poor, single parents, people who are unemployed. People a lot of times associate Medicaid with non-his insurance. And this actually is all... It's like an umbrella. All these things fall under Kid Care, under Florida Healthy Kids and Kid Care. Just a couple quick things. 30%... People who are... Kids who are uninsured are 30% less likely to receive medical attention. Uninsured newborns have lower birth weights, birth weights, and higher rates of premature death. It's just all kinds of risk factors. They're not going to the doctor, they're using ERs. I guess how it is relevant to you guys and to the community is, basically, we're trying to have a better quality of life for your community members. We want them in school. We want their parents at work. We want people who are working and are paying ridiculous amounts of money on health insurance to not have to do that. You'd be surprised what people can qualify for. I put it in there. It shows you a family of eight can make over $80,000 a year. That's six children. And qualify, a family of four can make over 40, like $46,000 plus and qualify for this insurance at $20. No... They don't have to meet a deductible. They're just paying a $20 premium. And basically, what we want to do is whoever in the community, whoever you know, whoever, we want to get this out there and get people knowing that we can come to them. We can help them get insured. A big part of it will be when you roll around with the county. What maybe you can help us with is when your insurance, everybody's coming up for... To re-enroll, because you're probably all locked in. Most of your employees are gonna be locked in. Most of county, city, school officials, everybody, school employees, everyone's pretty much locked in. But in January, they can have this new insurance. And we're talking about saving thousands of dollars. My colleague in Putnam... I mean, I'm sorry, in Columbia County, just by saving... Just by signing up, seven teachers is saving over $30,000 for these people plus because of what they're not having to pay in costs. So most people are having to pay $600 a month to cover their families on health insurance. So it really is possible for working families, to city employees, county officials, county employees, teachers, to get on this health insurance, because we're signing them up every day.
Ms. Hawkins?
Yes.
We have a 2 o'clock insurance committee meeting today.
Oh.
If you want to stick around, we'd love to have you.
I would love to be there. Yes, thank you.
I got a question.
And I will wrap this up. But basically, we're just asking you to who you know to get the information out there. We have a print shop at NEFEC. I can print a billion copies of anything that you would need, anything to get out to your churches. You know, I'm talking to the community as well. And I'm actually grateful I came today because there was organizations I didn't know about, and now I know who to reach out. And I'll be doing that. But just...
Ms. Hawkins, Commissioner Libley has a question for you.
Yes.
If I could. In the case of your teachers you were just speaking of, and, say, futuristic our employees at the county.
Yes.
I know the kids have to be uninsured for amount of time before your program will pick them up. How do you get around that?
It... They are actually very lenient about these things. If, say, a parent... Say, someone dropped their insurance because they couldn't afford it, if you put it in the notes, they work with you on it. I've had a family who had to drop their insurance due to this in the insane cost that they were having to pay. But because they were within 5%, because it was more than 5% of their income, that's how they get in and they qualify for it.
I think that needs to be highlighted more, because that will scare somebody off in a heartbeat.
Yeah. And I think it also needs to be highlighted that this is not the Affordable Care Act. This is not Obamacare, all the different things people associate with that, which is a lot of scary right now. CHIP, which is Children's Health Insurance Programs, have been around since 1993.
This program's been around for a while.
Yeah. It's all been around. It's not going anywhere. And if they did, they'd have to come up with something to replace it with. And when you start messing with children's insurance, you're gonna get some unhappy people.
So along the lines of Commissioner Libley... Commissioner Libley, are you done?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Along the lines of Commissioner Libley, let's say that there's a family, a gentleman that makes under $45,000, has four kids, and he works for the county, and his wife and children are on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Does he have to drop the children in order for them to be picked up?
He will have to drop the children. And that's a big issue that comes up, is that when you're on... You're either on an individual plan or you're on a family plan. Sometimes it costs, you know, it's either... Doesn't matter if you have six kids, two kids, a wife, whatever. You're going from one person to multiple people. For some people, it's not gonna be worth it to do this, because they still have to put their wife on their insurance. While they're paying for their wife, they still have to pay for their children. So it's the same cost no matter what. This is gonna be attractive to people who are single. Most... A lot of single people who are with children, so they're not having to put a spouse on there as well. Obviously, the unemployed, they may qualify for the Medicaid portion. When it's two... And when it is a husband and wife, sometimes it is not as attractive. But, I mean, I sign those people up too, and they are only paying $20 or $15. And the significant amount that is saving them, it's to them, has been worth it. So, you know, it's not commission-based or anything. We're a grant. You know, we're just trying to get in to get
More questions.
As many kids as we can.
One more question, if I can, Carrie. What...
Of course.
How much money you got?
Million dollars. Two-year, million-dollar grant.
How big's the district?
Putnam.
Well, no, for the million bucks.
Oh, we have nine counties we're serving. So Baker, Putnam, Gilchrist, Hamilton, Columbia, Union, Bradford, Nassau, and...
North Florida race counties, everyone.
Yeah. See, NEFEC serves 15 different member districts, but we are only serving... The only ones that opted in were those nine. And we have different numbers. We do have to meet to get... To be able to keep the grant. But... And it has been kind of slow. You know, that's why we need support. You know, we need people who really want to get these kids insured. That's why we went through the schools, because we want kids in school.
To echo Commissioner Harvey, I'd really invite you to come here at 2 o'clock today.
I will be there. I'm excited.
And the gentleman over there with his phone on, raise your hand, Brandon, he's with the Placodilly News. He would probably love to do a story on this.
Yes, he would.
And I'm sure you would. There you go, Brandon.
I think he does. I... Yes.
We can fix you right up.
Commissioner Goddard has a question for you, Ms. Hawkins.
Yes.
Just a real brief. It says here, of course, they need to be a US citizen.
Yes, that has been... I was in your... I was in your Crescent City schools, and I did come to realize that the principal was pointing out to me that half of his elementary school are... Not that they're illegal aliens, but they don't speak English. There are a lot of non-English-speaking families. And so we are working on getting all that information to those schools. But you do have to be a US citizen, or you have the option to be... What's... I just forgot the word for it. What page are you on? I'm sorry.
It's on page three.
Page three.
There are other programs, I can't call them right now, that cover those children, no.
Okay, well, as a US...
Or a qualified noncitizen, that's right.
They would be a US citizen, the child.
Yes.
And the parent may not be.
That is...
And of course, you're also saying they must have an income coming in.
They don't have to have an income. No, it's... That's for healthy kids. Basically, the way it works, and I... Because I was just gonna be so brief, I didn't break it down that much for you, I'm sorry. But the kids that are zero to one, they fall under a certain category. Zero to four fall under a category. But kids five to nineteen, through 19, the day you turn 19, you're no longer eligible. But they are the ones that are falling for under these subsidies for... But they are the ones that are falling for, under these subsidies for the, the ten, the fifteen dollars, the twenty dollars. If you're under those other ages, you're falling under Medicaid in, in the younger brackets, or you don't have a cost. Medicaid, I mean, I'm sorry, Medicaid also is with a subsidized amount. But if they are not working, they're most likely going to fall under Medicaid.
Let me ask one more.
You can ask all the questions.
Do you have a bilingual person on your staff?
Nefec, I'm almost positive Nefec as an organization does. But what we have with, with Florida Kid Care is we have things available and people to talk to available in Creole, Spanish, English, and another language as well. We, they are so easy to get on the phone. Basically, what we do is I'm sitting with the family. If I did need an interpreter, the school would provide me one, Putnam County Schools.
They have contractors now.
Yeah, we would definitely have access to an interpreter. It's especially over like in the Crescent City area and all those schools, they have access to four or five people. So that we have full access to all their staff, which is great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens, any questions?
See you too.
See you too, I'm excited, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Okay, item number ten, Commissioners, Rhonda Masters. And I'm going to read this, because I love this word. Volunteers for the Gula Gichi Tour National Cycling Event, March twenty-fourth.
Who knows what Gula Gichi means?
I have done some homework on it.
Have you?
And I've been advised, so yeah.
All right.
Pretty big organization. Go right ahead.
Rhonda Masters, Federal Point. I'm here today to share some information about the Gula Gichi Cycling Tour. Gula Gichis are a group of people who actually first came and lived off the coast of South Carolina near Charleston. From there, they sort of migrated north and south. The closest community to us is actually in Armstrong, which is a small, unincorporated community in St. John's County. So what they're doing is the Bike Florida Organization, Joy Hancock is the director, they're having their annual spring tour. And this year is the Gula Gichi Tour. They're housing at the St. John's County Fairgrounds. And then they're doing what's called a wagon wheel format, where they're going to be riding the bike trail. And the wagon wheel format means that every day, starting March the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, they're going to ride a different route using the trails. And of course, they're going to be coming through our beautiful county a number of these days. And so I was approached by them, because we have our church, St. Paul's Episcopal, on the St. John's River. And St. Paul's is going to be a rest stop for them. And the rest stop, because we're the last stop on the last day, we're also the end of tour party. And so we're going to be doing that. In getting involved with it, I was asked if we could supply some additional volunteers. They actually need some volunteers on the March twenty-second date, on the riverfront, at the river center in Palatka. And they need some volunteers at the East Palatka Community Park, which will also be a rest stop. The tour group, the Bike Florida people, actually provide everything. They provide tables, portlets, bike racks, the food, the beverages. They just need people who will volunteer to come and man a table and hand, hand it out. So if you know of anyone, I'll have my contact information. If you want to call me, and then I can help get them in touch with the people who need to coordinate this. This is a huge event. I was surprised. I'm so happy that we are getting some of the residuals from this. And hopefully, in the future, we can host our own tour here at our fairgrounds at some point in time. But know that right now, there are five hundred and forty-five registered cyclists for this event. Sixty-eight percent of them are from outside of the state of Florida. So they're actually flying in, they, I learned a lot, they crate their bikes. These bikes are, are anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars apiece. So they're, they're people with means, flying in to do this event. They, what's unusual is forty-eight percent of these riders this year are female. So it's usually a pretty predominant male sport, but the women are getting close to being a fifty-fifty with them. And the average age of the cyclist is sixty-four years old.
Wow.
The Wednesday event, which is the event that we're going to have, the big riverfront event here in Palatka, it's their century day, meaning that they're going to be riding a hundred miles that day, before returning then back to the fairgrounds. So, and that week, please look, be careful, watch for cyclists on our roads. And the other, the last thing I want to say is that Joy Hancock has told me that if we wanted to put together information on Putnam County, that we could do that. I can get it to her, she's going to put it into their cycling packets. Every cyclist gets a packet of information about the community. And so that would be great for us to put information about our county and the, what we have available. And then maybe they'll come back on another tour and visit us again.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Rhonda, one thing that I got to help you along here.
Okay.
Blue Ways and Trails, Putnam County Blue Ways and Trails are going to have kayaks available for this group of riders.
Yes.
On the riverfront in Palatka that day, at our launch downtown. And just a historical, we've hosted this twice. We had eight hundred and fifty riders and six hundred and some change the second time. And many of the returning riders are coming, because they've been to Palatka before for the event, which we hosted. And they're familiar with our, and they're going to see a lot of improvements. They hadn't seen the East Palatka Trail yet. So it'll be new to, that wasn't finished at the time, because this is very exciting.
It is, it is tremendous. And I want to thank to the Blue Ways and Trails and to this commission for supplying us with a letter of support. We're at St. Paul's Episcopal are applying for a grant from our Episcopal Church, from the headquarters in New York, so that we can make some improvements on our properties, that we can be, have a soft launching land for kayakers and any paddlers, and also to have some facilities so that the bikers, because we're sort of at a crossroad where both the Blue Way and the trail sort of come together. So we're looking forward to hopefully receiving that grant, making those improvements, and filling a gap in that, in the trail.
We should give a plug too, to the Armstrong community. They take, it's a very small community.
Yes.
They take this very serious. And they, the, the love is felt. I can tell you that. The food, the music, and the fact that you're there, you won't forget it. They do a great job.
They do.
And whatever you need from us, I think you mentioned some signs and packets of information. We should be able to handle that pretty easy with the Chamber of Commerce. So just again, get, stay in touch with me, I'll give it to Yvonne, our Public Information Officer, and we'll get it out to people and move in that direction.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you at two o'clock also, I understand. Okay, next thing, item eleven on our agenda, codes enforcement. It's item eighty-nine, page eighty-nine in your packet. Fine reduction case two thousand nine dash oh three six four, Dolores Frey, one twenty-seven Lakeview Road. Mr. Sammons, looks like you're poised to be talking today.
Yes. First case is two thousand nine zero three six four, one twenty-seven Lakeview Road. Dolores Frey and her husband have owned the property. Type of violation was a dilapidated mobile home with encareer premises. Length of time to achieve compliance was seven years, six months. A lot of that's because they're elderly, very elderly people. Number of liens, one. They've owned it for the whole time. Staff recommends that the board accept a four hundred and one hundred dollar, which is our cost that we're involved in the case, in lieu of the fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar fine if it's paid within seven months. The Freys are in concert with the recommendation. Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Well, is anybody, before we do that, we have, we should add, anybody here want to speak in favor of or against?
I don't think they're here, any of these are.
They're not here?
They've reached the conclusion already with all of these we're seeing today.
And we have a proper motion on the floor?
I'll second.
All right, proper second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you. Case number two thousand fourteen zero three zero six, Edna Slay, fine reduction request, three oh nine Pine Street.
This is a case of deteriorated housing. We actually went out there with the sheriff's office, and they have two houses on the property, and one of them was being, was housing some people that were running a theft ring, a bunch of kids. But the property was in bad shape, and it took two years, four months to get it into compliance. There is not a lien presently on the property. The Ms. Slay owned it the whole time. Staff is recommending that the board accept seven hundred and fifteen dollars in lieu of the fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollar fine if it's paid within six months.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sammons. Board members?
I'll make the motion, we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion, proper second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Case number two thousand nine zero nine nine six, William Bedford Green, one one three Maydoney Road, Hawthorne. Mr. Sammons?
This case is on for me to construction care premises. Length of time to achieve compliance is seven years, two months. There's one lien on the property. Length of time that Mr. Greens owned it is three months. He bought it on a tax deed sale. And since I did the agenda item, and today, we got word from the clerk of the courts that there was a two thousand six hundred and three dollar and twenty-four cent overbid. And so I would recommend that we accept that and not charge the man anymore.
Yeah, I think I lost you, an overbid?
He bought the property on a tax deed sale, and you have to bid a certain amount to cover the tax, back taxes. He paid more than that.
Okay.
That money came back to the county. The two thousand six hundred and three dollars and twenty-four cents came back to the county. We got that check last week.
So about thirteen hundred dollars more to the good than...
Yes.
Clerk Smith's staff was doing a really good job.
Okay, Commissioners?
Move rule.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Label?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
If I could, John, don't leave it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask John to explain this, it's kind of a new for, it's a new-old format, but you can explain, especially for new Commissioners, what we're doing here? Because you see them in a different way, which you have, Larry. I have.
Yeah. In the past, I kind of went through from day one through all the meetings and stuff like that. And Rick and Brian talked about it and felt that that was not needed for this, for fine reductions. We also did take it to the special magistrate before. It's your lien, we didn't feel that, that slowing the process by taking it to him was necessary either. So in the past, we actually held, some of them were the people were in agreement with it, we put them on the consent agenda. We've talked about doing that again, we're not doing that today. But that may be something that we think about doing down the road, so that it goes a little quicker, and they're not controversial. So this, that's why this looks a little different. On the abatements, I'll still go through the, the more detailed discussion.
I appreciate it, and it was, yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I elaborate on the, the overbid for the tax deed? When a property goes to a tax deed sale, that process eliminates all liens except government liens. So a government lien would transfer with a property. So in this case, there were additional dollars over the amount owed for taxes, and then that paid off the, the lien. So that's kind of how that works.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, next case, item number, fine reduction request, case number two thousand twelve dash oh two three nine, Friends of Lake Swan Camp, six twenty, State Road twenty-six, page ninety-eight in your packet. Mr. Sammons, please.
Type of violation here was a burned house. The length of time to achieve compliance was one year and two months. The county actually abated this property. A number of, and type of liens are three liens, daily fine, the recording, and the abatement lien. Staff is recommending that the board of county commissioners accept fourteen hundred and twenty-five dollar abatement lien, plus eight hundred and two dollars of additional cost, in lieu of the nineteen thousand, two hundred and five dollar fine if it's paid within three months. And Mr. Perry from Lake Swan Camp is here today.
Mr. Rollins, would you like to speak to us? And before he comes up, Mr. Rollins is the father of Commissioner Gavin Rollins, who is serving overseas right now with our US military, and has taken a hiatus from county commission duties, but will be returning to Clay County as a county commissioner. Thank your son for us, for the service that he's providing to our country.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. And I will say that Lake Swan Camp is somewhat centrally located for any meetings that you would like to have for your multiple county venues.
Good, thank you.
So we would like to offer that without charge.
Thank you.
For you to use that. So I have several things that I'd like to get kind of in at this point, have waited for this point. I first came to Putnam County fifty-five years ago as a twelve-year-old to Lake Swan Camp as a camper. And I have maintained contact with the camp over these fifty-five years. My wife and I met there forty-eight years ago, and she prayed to receive Christ as her Savior at the camp. So we've got some really deep roots. It's really a pleasure to be there at this stage of my life, to be at home, working there. It's not a job. I don't dread getting up in the morning and going to work. I have to kind of back off. But the, the camp is a, kind of a quiet little place there. A lot of people say when they come, I never realized what you have back here. We can accommodate three hundred and sixty-four. We have really focused the last five years, since I've been back at the camp full-time, in improving our facilities. And we've done a major job, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when I give some commendations for the various offices in the county that I would like to bring forth. Last year, we grossed nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. We had a payroll of over three hundred and fifty thousand. We have, in the last five years, made a major renovation on one of our buildings of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we make a significant contribution to this county as far as the revenues are concerned. And our, our main focus is ministry, and we have a lot of things that we offer free of charge to some ministries, a prison ministry that's been working with us. We give them free housing for a week to work in the jails around in the area. And we're really thankful for that. I have, we have a personal residence, by the way, my name is Perry Rollins, and we have a house at two forty-three Ashley Lake Drive in Melrose. We have been property owners there for twenty-eight years, and just love living here in Putnam County. And I've had the privilege of teaching four years at Penile Baptist Academy, and then being the administrator at River Christian Academy. And it gave me a new appreciation for Putnam, for Palatka, as I travel back and forth and, and got to know people in the community. A lot of those were good transitions for my being back at Lake Swan Camp. So I really appreciate the community and the opportunity I've had to work there. I also had the opportunity to work with the Early Learning Coalition as a nonprofit position on that board. Last year, the camp also was able to host over seven thousand nine hundred people at the camp. That's a lot of people coming into Putnam County. We had over twenty-six thousand camper days. We're just thrilled to be a part of Putnam County. As we continue to focus on improving our facilities, not necessarily growing bigger, we also realize that we've had some history with our neighbors, and we're trying our best to make sure that we maintain good relations with our neighbors. And I'm here to report that that has been going along well, and we're, we're thankful for that. Part of our renovation and, and moving forward and improving our facilities has been to work with the county offices. And so whether it's the clerk of the court in recording, or whether it's the tax appraiser, or the tax collector, or whether it's the sheriff's department, every county office that we are able to work with has just been exceptional in their customer service to us, and in working with us to make sure that we do things properly when it comes to recording and some of those kinds of legal matters, as well as with the Health Department and making sure that we're compliant with them, with the Planning Department and making sure that we're compliant there, with the codes even, and I'll come back to that in a minute. But the Building Department, I'd really like to single out them for praise. They have never one time backed off, or skirted, or not been holding us accountable uh, backed off or, or skirted or not been holding us accountable as far as the codes are concerned or any of those kinds of issues. But they have been very professional. They have been very, uh, good in working with us to make sure that we, in a partnership with them, provide renovations that are safe, that are according to the code, and that are, are done in a timely manner. Their perspective has been not in trying to stop the work that is being progressed, but to see how we can move it forward. And that kind of mentality is a, a real tribute to Kevin and, uh, to all of the, uh, ones in the building department. We have had some very, um, touchy, uh, time-sensitive things that we've been able to work through that show that they are people of integrity and refuse to back off on, on some of those kinds of things. I won't go into detail on that, but it's just been, uh, tremendous. As I have been working, uh, I have a, a love for real estate. Um, we noticed a house that was in disrepair, and I kept looking at it thinking, "Boy, that'd be a great house for one of our staff guys." So, we ended up finding out that it was in a codes violation, and we ended up, uh, taking a house that, uh, the guy could not really do anything with. He didn't have the money to tear it down, didn't have the money to fix it, um, couldn't sell it without fixing it. So he was kind of in a catch-22. We took a charitable donation for that property, and immediately we're able to fix the outside and seal it to make it safe and attractive for the community. So the people in the, in the area were thrilled. He was thrilled. We have a house that we're working on now and have an active, um, uh, application or, or an active, um, permit in trying to bring it to, uh, completion. We're able to do it because we have a lot of volunteers. And as we have the volunteers help us, we're able to move it forward and bring it to, uh, completion at that point. When I found out, uh, about the property next door, I realized that, uh, the butlers who own that property, to my knowledge, had not really been communicative with the codes people about doing anything about, uh, the abatement on that property. So I went and talked to them, and, um, it, it was again a situation where it was beneficial for them to give the property to the camp and for us to use it eventually for staff housing. Um, it was my understanding that, uh, the $1,425 abatement was on there for removing the debris. Um, I didn't know about the other administrative costs of the $802, and I would request that, uh, the board consider taking that 802 off and just requiring us to pay the 1,425. Most of the 802, it seems, is just, um, by salaried people that were not paying a lot of extra money, uh, to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Rollins?
One quick thing I'd like to also ask consideration, uh, or give our support for the bike path to come 26 from Putnam Hall to Melrose instead of 219. Um, we're strategically located there, and we get probably 15 to 20 bikers who just stop on their own at the camp. Very dangerous road. We've had one death that we know of on, on a bike a number of years ago, and, uh, it just seemed a lot, uh, of pros as far as that bike path.
I got a lot of calls on that last few weeks, and I believe Commissioner Lible is already addressing that situation, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your service to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. We appreciate your- Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I have a, Mr. Salmon, um, I'd like to have your input on that, on the $802.
Uh, basically, it's your lien. Uh, we have no, uh, issue with you, uh, doing that, taking that off. Uh, um, it's a place that draws in a lot of people, brings in money into the community, so, uh, there could be rationale for that. Uh, our recommendation is, we do this recommendation because this is kind of the way we've been doing it.
Okay.
So we try to be consistent, but you guys can do, you can, you guys can forgive whatever you need.
I did wanna get your opinion on that. I, I, I moved to accept the 1,425.
All right, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. It carries.
Thank you.
I wanna say something, Commissioner, Mr. Rollins, before you walk out. And commissioners, I found myself about a year and a few months ago, um, helping the American Legion tear down an old house out in your area. And I got out there, and these poor older gentlemen were just winded, and they, they just couldn't do much more. And me being the type A personality that knows everybody in the world, and again, if my cellphone ever comes missing, that's what you want. You want my cellphone, not my wallet. Um, so I called his son, who is the county commissioner in Clay County, who we've met the last Monday of each month since I've been here, and before he went off to, um, to do the, the work of our nation, if you will. And I said, "Gavin, we need a, we need some equipment down here. We can't do this the way we're doing it." And it wasn't, 15 minutes later, I heard a tractor coming down the road from your camp, who, they volunteered to come out and help these people. The old people were, needed their home, their burnt-down home taken off. American Legion was doing that 'cause he was an Army vet, and it was just a good fit. And I wanna publicly thank you for that. I, I don't think I ever did thank you, and I do wanna say thank you for bringing your equipment and doing the work that we needed done that day.
It's our pleasure. That's part of our core values.
And we'll take you up on the offer of joint meeting area. I'm sure our attorney will remember that conversation and our administrators. So, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you're into the appointment part of your agenda, and we'll go down Affordable Housing Committee, District Five. Anybody to appoint?
Uh, Commissioner, I appoint Larissa Ricketts. I don't believe she's here today. She'll be here for the meeting tomorrow.
Okay. We'll take them all at one time, if, if that's okay.
There you go.
Fishing Fund Advisory Committee, District Two. That's you, Commissioner Lible, is that? You don't have anybody? Okay.
I haven't found anybody to serve.
Library Board, District Two. All right, moving on.
Working on that one.
Okay, MSBU Adjusting Committee, replacing at-large Commissioner Pickens. Have no, I don't have any-
I'd like to nominate Butch Miller.
Butch Miller? Okay, excellent choice. All right, Commissioners, I promised you a name for the Northeast Florida Regional Council. I've been working with a gentleman who, at this time, would like to wait just a few more months for something else. Um, and I would like to nominate Kelly Redford from Crystal Cove to be on the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council. Okay, Planning Commission, we have three appointments, District Five.
Yes, Commissioner, I'd like to nominate Mark Fisher.
Okay. And we have two at-large. Is any other, okay, Waterways and Trails, Commissioner Lible?
I would like to serve in that capacity because of my work with the trails and waterways.
I would love for you to serve in that capacity, sir.
Okay.
Okay. And now we need to start, um, basically loading-
Wait, 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 I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. Parks and Recreation is what I was interested in.
Okay. Well, currently, I'm serving on that, so I, I will remove myself and-
Well, this, yeah, Commissioner Harris was there, and I've assumed her role.
Oh, on Waterways and Trails. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, you're assuming her role.
No, Parks and Recreation.
Okay, okay. I, I'm following you now. All righty.
The, I'm sorry, on Waterways and Trails, I just wanted to trim the overall committee from 15 to eight members, is what we're doing here.
I agree. That's way too-
Where I can get a quorum. I mean, I don't know how many committees you've had with 15 people, but you will not get a quorum.
That's right. You might as well not have meetings. Okay, so the recommendation for Waterways and Trails, Commissioner Lible is serving as the commissioner and the chairman of that committee, and now we've changed the committee structure to eight members, and we'll start filling that committee up soon.
Aye.
So, okay. And also, um, Parks and Recreation, Commissioner Lible will take, will be on the Parks Advisory Recreation Committee as he is on the Waterways and Trails. I'll still be the chairman of that committee. Zoning Board of Adjustments, we have two at-large. Is there anybody that would, any appointments on that? Okay, committee, committees with Commissioner, okay, Juvenile Justice Circuit Advisory Board, Commissioner Flag was on that prior. Is there any commissioner that would like to take that?
Come on, you new commissioners. Don't be shy.
We can wait. We can wait. We, there's no hurry. Life's not gonna stop. Okay, so let's move on, so-
Hey, Tommy Stillwell?
No, you can't do that. I will not allow that to take place. I'm sorry.
Come on, Commissioner Goddard, you look like a policeman.
All right, so let's go through our appointments, just to make sure we clear. For the record, how, Affordable Housing, Commissioner Goddard appointed Larissa Ricketts. MSBU Adjusting Committee, Commissioner Pickens appointed Butch Miller. Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council, Kelly Redford. Uh, Planning Commission, District Five, will be Mark Fisher. Um, Commissioner, Waterways and Trails, we have made sure Commissioner Lible is chairman, and total committee will consist of eight. And Commissioner Lible will be on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. So Commissioners, I need a motion to accept those changes, please.
I'll make a motion.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard. Do we have a second?
A second.
Oh, wait. Okay, thank you. Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you very much. County Administrator Rick Leary.
Yes, Sir, Elatchua County has offered up the date of April 17th as a time for the joint meeting. It's like 6 o'clock, and they have offered to come to Putnam County.
All right, wonderful.
What's the location again?
Here. They're coming to us. So, we'll roll out the red carpet, if you will, if you're home group, so they're coming in. You could be here also. And April 17th at 6 o'clock. So thank you very much. Is that all you have, Mr. Leary?
Yes, sir.
County Attorney, Mr. Manning.
I have nothing.
Okay, Clerk of the Court, Tim Smith.
I've said enough today.
Okay. I don't know if you ever say enough. You're so gentle and so polite. So, no, you don't ever, we should all strive to be like Tim. That's true. Okay, Commissioner Comments? I have one that I'd like to bring up. I would like for the board to consider February 20th, next Monday night at 5:30, that, uh, we can be briefed on the audit and accept public comments here in this room. And I would like to know the feelings of my fellow commissioners on that date and time, please. Commissioner Lible?
Um, briefed, um, by who exactly?
Our staff and go over our attorney and go over the items on the audit.
And what's the time?
5:30 on Monday evening.
Um, I'm not real clear, but, um, if you want to, it's fine with me.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
I think it's good.
Commissioner Pickens?
So it would be briefed by staff, and will it be, will this be the only meeting? Or are we gonna have a series of, of meetings? Are we going to, as a, a board, call workshops? Um, you know, discuss, you know?
Well, in, in all fairness, if I could, um, I've been, in fairness to consulting, we're letting the public in, which I have no problem with ever, but I've also been asked throughout the community to associate a cost with this audit. And I think to be fair, that if you want a series of meetings, Mr. Pickens, I think at some point in time, I don't know if we need a standalone meeting, but I would like to ask staff to compile the hours that our employees have spent on this for the 14 months, in addition to the state hours. I think it's fair, and we need to do that.
I think we could talk about that.
Very fair.
You and Commissioner Lible's concerns that evening.
Is that, Mr. Leary, possible?
Uh, well, we can put together some estimate of, of time, and, you know, I mean, it's, I don't know that we've tracked every, you know, it'd been impossible to have tracked every, uh, every hour and every, you know-
I'm asked this a lot in the community.
Yeah, but, you know, we-
They just, they wanna a cost associated with it.
Put together a rough estimate of effort put forth by employees to comply with, you know, requests for information and compilation of records and research that's been done. Uh, it'd be, it'll be rough in nature, but we can do that.
So in the briefing, if I could, by staff, are we looking for recommendations, controls, as Mr. Smith refers to them, in these departments where the 10 items were listed? Or how deep are we going with this Monday night?
Well, I think we're at the 35,000 foot, but we do have a 30-day, uh, window that we have to respond at. And I think that would be the meeting that we can ask the questions concerning your concerns and also Commissioner Pickens, whether we, where we go from here and how many more meetings need to take place.
Well, Chairman Harvey, I think a more productive meeting would have their intentions and controls that they intend to, to, uh, implement to their departments on hand, too, if we're gonna do that.
I agree.
You know, and then, uh, we get it down, and then staff has directions where to go back in our 30-day response. And it's just, I feel this is new, and I, I don't know about you, but I pretty much understand it. It was in layman's terms, and I would like staff to be able to respond to it.
I agree.
Not to put off your meeting, but I wanna be a little more efficient with this meeting than, you know-
Mr. Leary, can we accomplish that with-
Knock it out, in other words.
Are staff recommendations by Monday evening?
Well, I mean, it sounds to me like what I hear some of you saying is that you would like to have responses formulated to review essentially, and I'm not sure that we can have those responses formulated by Monday evening. I think that's probably gonna take a little bit more time.
And I didn't mean that, if that's what you think. That's kinda fast. I thought we need a little more time.
I mean, that's what I heard, kinda heard you say.
Okay, I thought that's what I had heard, so.
So, no, I, I would say in lieu of Monday, I mean, uh, I'm just throwing that out there. I think that to be more efficient, we should have the solutions. If the public's here, you can talk about them. We can submit them way before our 30-day limit, and we knock it out. And we go about our business that we need to get on and get these, these corrections made, and we're more, uh, efficient, um, as the audit has, uh, instructed us to be.
So are we in favor of February 20th at 5:30? Is that what I'm hearing? With, I think Commissioner Pickens would like to know what's going forward, but we need a timeframe to sit down and talk about this. We know the recommendations. We got those. And the implementation will come later down the road, but, um-
So the question now, can staff, particularly the department heads, respond by the 20th? And I think what we're hearing is that's kinda pushing it. I mean, is there an alternative date that we could get both of these things done at one time? Because I really think that these, uh, responses to the audit findings should come from the people that implement them daily. And, and have, you know, they've, the auditors have found fault in our departments, um, throughout. Am I right, Mr. Leary? Am I on right track with this? I mean, who better?
I, I think, but now what I think I'm kinda hearing is that, to borrow, uh, you know, your phrase, we're sort of at the 30,000-foot level, and I think maybe Monday, maybe we drop down to the 15,000-foot level, and then in a subsequent meeting, we're gonna drop down lower and then talk about the specificity of the response.
That's what I'd like to see. You're right. Okay, so we're, we agree Monday at 15,000 feet, a future date concerning Commissioner Pickens at 7,500 feet, and then we'll have one last meeting possibly before the 30-day to get down to, on the fairway here. Okay, good. Commissioners, is that good for y'all?
That's great.
Okay.
Feel like an aviator here.
All right, we need a motion on the floor, so the chair will entertain a-
Move approval.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
A second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We have a meeting Monday, February 20th at 5:30 here in the Board of County Commission Room. Commissioners, any other comments? Over to my far right, Commissioner Lible.
Uh, the iron horse this weekend, the trail, uh, well, the gong gauge in Jacksonville was a 10.
Yeah.
And it was a beautiful day in West Putnam. Um, those runners amazed me. There was a man out there, he had to be pushing 80, and, uh, he did that course, 100 miles in 24 hours. Just amazing.
It was amazing. Thank you, Commissioner. I wanna follow up on what Commissioner Lible said. I got there about 6:30 in the morning and met with a gentleman that was from Brazil, who flew in from Brazil to, uh, him and another runner to attend, um, this. And there was one gentleman that was an hour and a half late, but he was gonna do the 100 mile, and they said it wouldn't, that, that probably affected him a bit because he was probably better shaped to sleep in an extra hour. So, it is amazing, and I tell ya, it's wonderful for the, for the organizations that really participated to show off Putnam County. And, uh, there was a lot of people there that really got to see our nature and, and it's all of its glory. To start off that morning in the 40s and to finish up that day in the 80s, absolutely Florida weather, and it was good.
One thing that I have to add, my wife and I rode, took our bikes out and rode, and, uh, it's a good workout. If you start at Roberts Lane at the end of the pavement, it's a gradual uphill climb, but the, uh, if you can make it to floor home, the ride back is really fun.
That's right.
It's downhill slightly, too, but it was a good workout for us. I felt the burn.
So next year, Commissioners, we're all gonna sign up for the 24-hour endurance? What do you, Commissioner Goddard, any- What do you, Commissioner Goddard, any comments?
No, I'm just very pleased with the way I feel our county is moving.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Pickens?
Just enjoyed another board meeting and appreciate all the presentations, especially from Gator Delote, Sheriff Delote, and Ms. Carrie Hawkins, and also Rhonda Masters. So just a lot of positive information for our county.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, at 2:00, you do have a insurance meeting today, and I'm going to try to go home and see my wife for a few minutes. Our 32nd wedding anniversary today. So see you at 2:00, and this meeting's adjourned.